...strategy. And I believe, if I recall, City Manager, the instruction staff was to come back with the options staff finds are possible ways to fund downtown improvements, right? Yes?
Yes.
Did you open this as the Urban Renewal Agency or the City?
No.
Adhere and reopen it as the Urban Renewal?
Okay, I'll adjourn this city council meeting and open it as Urban Renewal. Okay. And, yes, sir?
I need to declare a potential conflict of interest that, as part of these discussions and deliberations, is the potential for an LCC Downtown Center. Need to declare that I do work for LCC and that, you know, that is a potential conflict of mine.
Thank you for that. Okay, so the only other thing I want to say before the discussion begins is, so they're bringing back what you all asked them to bring back today. And then I talked to Counsel Brown, and you've all received things, some communications from him about some options for financing that he wants to discuss as well. But first we'll hear from staff, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Denny and his team. And as you know, we have tonight, as well as Wednesday, as reserved to continue this conversation, if you choose to do that as well.
So, thank you. Good evening. At the last council work session, our agency work session, you identified specific downtown improvement projects that you hoped to advance. And those included downtown fiber, the farmer's market, park blocks and open space, and the old LCC Downtown Campus Building. As the mayor indicated, the agency provided direction to bring back an option for funding these projects utilizing the existing downtown urban and old district, along with an alternative funding strategy for these projects. So today, we're going to show you a range of scale, scope, and cost for each of these projects, which together form options for various project packages that you might want to consider. And we're really hoping that a discussion of these projects and project packages will ultimately inform the next steps for funding these projects, ultimately utilizing urban renewal or an alternative source of funding for these projects. If the agency wants urban renewal to remain as an option for funding these projects or other downtown projects, our recommendation is to begin the process necessary to amend the downtown urban renewal plan, which includes required public benefit elements. And if not, our intent would be to come back and continue discussions with the city council regarding alternative funding strategies. Amanda's going to provide more detail on the projects and the funding strategies. And as we talk about the urban renewal funding strategy, I think it's important to recognize that you would need to start the plan amendment process, but that process does not commit the agency to these specific projects or the dollar amounts. And it really doesn't commit the agency, at least at this time, to approve a plan amendment. But because the district has expected to sunset this year, later this year, the timing is such that we would need to start a plan amendment process in order to keep this funding source as at least a possibility at this point. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Amanda, and she's going to provide more detail.
Before we do that, Denny, what was the date that we'd have to have it in motion by?
I think Amanda's going to cover that.
Cover that?
Yeah, she's going to go over the more detailed stuff, so.
Hi. So for the projects and how much they will cost, attachments A through D of your packet provide summary information. Elements of each project are yet to occur. This includes public engagement for the park blocks and open space, design and engineering for fiber, property negotiations for the farmer's market, and project scoping for the old LCC building. Therefore, there's a range of opportunities within each project. To accommodate this, we've provided an estimated range of potential packages. We called them A, B, and C, to give a sense of scale and scope. Project packages range from $17 million to $48 million. It's important to clarify that this is the range of total new downtown urban renewal money that would be needed, or the total for the alternative financing strategy. Both funding strategies assume the use of additional sources for projects. For example, we're assuming grant dollars would be utilized as much as possible for the fiber project. I'll briefly describe possible outcomes within each package, then I'll review the two funding Starting with high-speed fiber, the total cost estimate is $4 million. For the packages, $3 million is used. We've allocated the full amount for each package with the idea that we don't want to scale the initial phase. $3 million is the estimate for infrastructure investments within the downtown urban renewal district, and it was used in both the urban renewal funding strategy and the alternative to urban renewal funding strategy. Design engineering is underway that will identify the final cost. Regardless of which strategy is used, fiber is assumed to receive funding from additional sources such as grants. The next step for the project is to work with partners to complete the implementation plan, including design engineering and budget refinement. Moving to the second project, this project is about improving the park blocks or another downtown location in order to create a more attractive and functional venue for the farmer's market. The packages are based on the type of building and the cost of the land and site prep. These packages are for example purposes only. Regardless of which strategy is used, the farmer's market project is assumed to receive the existing downtown urban renewal funding of $500,000. As part of Package A, we'd spend $1 million for a simple structure, more of a pavilion than a building. For this level of spending, land and demolition of the Butterfly parking lot is not included. There are two paths as part of Package B, each at $4 million. The first of these two would have the building be the same as Package A, but the location options increase with a budget for acquisition and demolition or other site improvements. The second path goes in the other direction and allows the city to build a farmer's market that includes conditioned space for better year-round operations and the possibility of additional amenity space. It would depend on land and site prep funded from an unknown source. The example for Package C at $6.5 million includes a budget for a full-service building and land acquisition and improvement. The next steps for this project is to work with Lane County and the farmer's market. For the park blocks and open space improvements project, the first step will be asking the community about their aspirations and vision for our town square and a needs assessment in our growing downtown neighborhood. The results of that work could likely necessitate a placemaking plan and a management and programming plan to illustrate and implement the community vision. The area could be limited to the park blocks or have a broader approach and include other key downtown open spaces: the Holt Plaza, Broadway Plaza, the New Plaza at City Hall, the New Riverfront Park, and the pedestrians' path system in between these places. The public engagement results will guide the specific improvements to be made. For today, we've used information you've provided over the past few months, feedback from the Downtown Solutions Forum, and prior planning work to shape the three packages for example purposes. The example for Package A at $8.2 million would allow for the spruce-up option for the park blocks and similar improvements to the other open spaces. The park blocks could get permanent restrooms and repairs or upgrades as needed for lighting, seating, signage, security, paving, and landscaping. The Holt Center Plaza could have an outdoor information kiosk and improved accessibility. Broadway Plaza, if ultimately kept as public space, could have new lighting, seating, security, landscaping, technology, and public art. The connecting streets, particularly Willamette Street and 8th Avenue, could have better bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Finally, City Hall Plaza, which is currently being designed, would involve further discussion with that project team about the best use of funds. It could stretch project dollars estimated for the current design, or it could use higher quality materials or add elements that may be beyond the current project scope. These are all just example improvements to give a sense of the $8.2 million in spending. Package B at $11 million adds more money that could accomplish more of what the public engagement results ask for in the park blocks. They could be a new canopy over the stage area, curb extensions to improve the safety of those crossings, the surrounding streets, textured street paving at the intersections, or a family-friendly feature. Package C at $25 million could add redesigning Park Street as a curbless street. The Holt Center Plaza could have an outdoor simulcast screen. Broadway Plaza could get weather protection, or depending on the final vision for the space, could enable incorporation of the adjacent properties. For connecting downtown to the river, could convert 8th to a two-way street as articulated in the 2004 downtown plan. The next step for this project is to start the public engagement, which will inform specific improvements to make. Fourth project is the old LCC building at 1059 Willamette Street, across from Lane Transit District's bus station. The building is owned by Lane Community College. It's been vacant for three years since LCC opened its new downtown campus at 10th Avenue. Okay, it's been vacant since LCC opened its new downtown campus at 10th Avenue and Olive Street. The building originally was the Montgomery Wards Department Store. It's 66,000 square feet, three floors with a full basement. Its redevelopment would require extensive repairs to make it suitable for use. LCC has led some recent discussions, and several local entities have expressed interest, looking to potentially come together to create a multi-tenant facility that could house uses such as makerspace, coworking space, wet labs, and affordable startup and art incubation space. This concept has the potential to complement other investments downtown: the new LCC campus, Rain, Fertilab, and Broadway Commerce Center, and to add another critical part of the entrepreneurial ecosystem and innovation district that is emerging downtown. The next step is to work with LCC and other parties on redevelopment plan for the building. Packages A, B, and C also include staffing for project management, loan program and financial administration, legal agreements, and debt issuance. After 2021, there would be additional dollars available to either pay down debt sooner or, in the case of the alternative strategy, fund other general fund priorities. While the two funding strategies and the packages would have different lengths, the basic premise is that regardless of the funding strategy, the project delivery and the desire to maintain the successful downtown loan program would be the same. So now let's move to the two funding strategies. Using the direction we received from you, we put together the funding strategies, and they include several types of funding. You could continue to use the downtown urban renewal district to provide funds for projects, which would involve amending the plan. Or, in the alternative to urban renewal strategy, we would use the new general fund and a general obligation bond. I'll walk you through the highlights of each strategy and then provide some comparison With the downtown urban renewal strategy, we would retain the district's ability to collect tax increment funds. That's about $2 million in the current year. We would use a combination of cash and borrowed funds. Total spending under the maximum indebtedness limit is estimated to be fully paid in nine years for Package A, 15 for B, and 30 years for Package C. To utilize this funding strategy, you would need to update the downtown urban renewal plan with the new projects and the new spending limit that you'd want to work within. You may recall that for urban renewal, the technical term for the spending limit is maximum indebtedness, which sounds like a debt limit, but it really acts as a limit on the amount of funds that can be spent on specific things. Interest on borrowings and the downtown loan program, for example, are not included in the spending limit. The draft plan that was in your packet as attachment E has been written to include the four projects plus project administration and all three spending level packages. The urban renewal statutes require an accompanying report with demographic and financial information. Attachment I in your packet has the drafted report. The third aspect of the plan that you would need to update would be the boundary to incorporate the East Park Block area and the City Hall Block. The area is about seven acres, and this would allow the agency to spend dollars for the East Park Block and the City Hall Plaza. If you want to keep urban renewal as an option, you would start the amendment process tonight or Wednesday. That's not a final decision, but rather the start of a three-month process that would result in making a final decision on a plan amendment in June. We would send the draft plan and report to the other taxing districts, and notice of the public hearing and plan amendment would be mailed to the public in April. The Planning Commission would review the plan amendment in May. You would hold a public hearing in May also, followed by a work session to review comments. After going through that process and getting input from various parts of the community, council would be scheduled for final decision in June. This timing would allow for voter referral to the November ballot. Project preparations such as fiber, design engineering, and LCC scoping would occur over the next several months, all of which could inform final decisions about amending the plan and utilizing urban renewal. This timing is necessary to retain the use of tax increment revenues. In the alternative to urban renewal strategy, we would use new general fund from ceasing the division of taxes and a general obligation bond. First, the city would start receiving $1 million per year in new general fund revenues. Half would be used to repay borrowed money, because we'll need a significant amount of funds upfront to pay for the projects. In this case, we would borrow $7 million to pay for fiber and a portion of the farmer's market project. The remaining new general fund would be used for project delivery and loan program administration. To fund the remaining projects, you would ask voters for approval to pay for projects from general obligation bond measure. The bonds would be repaid over 20 years. We've highlighted some key comparison points between the two strategies. Both strategies accomplish the projects. An existing funding source, urban renewal, would have no new public cost. The alternative strategy would increase taxes to pay for the general obligation bond. The duration for urban renewal strategy depends on the spending limit increase, and the alternative strategy would pay off the debt in 2037. For the school's impact, urban renewal stays the same, and the alternative strategy results in a net loss due to compression of $340,000 per year as calculated by the tax assessor. So I've gone over a lot of information, and Sue and I will are available during your discussion after Denny closes it.
Thank you. So considering the projects that you've identified and the funding strategies that you've reviewed at this point, and considering that urban renewal appears to be a viable funding source for these projects, the recommendation is that we move forward with the plan amendment process, which would start the required public outreach steps. And at this point, we're suggesting that the full range of projects, so basically A through C or some variation that you choose, be included in the draft plan and put out for comment, knowing that it can be refined later in the process sometime before June. Again, keeping in mind that the agency would be able to decide between now and June if it wants to move forward with the urban renewal plan and more specific set of projects within that plan, or if it would like to go in a different direction.
Ready for discussion?
Yes. Thank you.
So I have Betty and George in the queue. Betty, first.
Thank you. Okay, first, you make, well, obviously, this is intended to push us toward keeping urban renewal, and it's as if it's a done deal. But, and when you say we can decide later, you don't start down a path unless you want to get to the end of it, in my opinion. You don't start toward a destination unless that's where you want to go. And we're making the assumption, or somebody's making the assumption, that we want to do all of those projects soon. If you remember about, I think, 10 or 12 years ago, there was a proposal to destroy all of West Broadway and put in new buildings. And some of us thought that was, it was much better to do incremental changes, and it went to the ballot and failed, the plan, and incrementally, things have improved, which I think is the better way to go about things. If we want to do all these things, we should decide what we want to do first and how. And I don't think you can assume that we need a GO bond right now. That would be, that would come when and if we decide there's something that we, for which we need to do it. Urban renewal has been in effect for, I think, 48 years. I told someone about 50 years. She said, "Really?" I said, "Well, almost." And it's intended to be used temporarily, stopped, and that if you want to, you could start over again. And this person talking to me, she said, "Why don't you do that?" I said, "Because there wouldn't be any money then, and it's easy to use the money this way without public input, really." Like, sure, they can speak, but it's too easy to use it. I would like to, we don't have any page numbers in the agenda today, so it's hard to tell where I'm talking about it. Well, there's page numbers in this plan, but the whole thing doesn't have page numbers. But if you look at the last time it was extended, and it's on page one of something, it says, except for the three projects, there were three projects at that time, and existing projects previously approved, there will be no initiation of additional projects. And expiration is to be on the repayment or defeasance of debt related to the urban renewal project specifically identified in the plan. That's the last time we extended it. That was in 2010. Then on the current proposal, it says, let's see, always says we're going to get feedback before making a final decision, but "The expectation that the downtown urban renewal district will terminate the use of tax increment financing after repayment or defeasance of all debt issued to fund a limited set of projects," same as before.
Would you like another round, Betty?
Yes, I probably will, but.
So before I call on George, I just want to clarify for the public that at our last meeting, it was the council who asked for an urban renewal option to be looked at, and it was the council who asked for a non-urban renewal option to be looked at. So this is direction from the council, and with no, and then part of what you're asking for always, when something gets brought back to you, is that a recommendation is made, and a recommendation has been made, but it's certainly nothing, the only thing there is what you've brought to the table here as a council. So George, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yes, that's what you just said is true, but it's very obvious what manager and staff want to do here, is amend the plan. I'm very disappointed. I sent a memo on Thursday, and I, it says here, "I would like staff to be prepared to critique and discuss the funding options that I've suggested here." We have, we actually have Funding Option Three, number three. It's right here. And so I'm going to have to spend part of my three minutes to read you guys what it is, and then I'll need probably at least two more rounds to talk about it. This is plan allows the urban renewal district to sunset. I'm using from Attachment A of today's AIS, a cost of $3 million. That's what it says in Attachment A. That's the cost of the high-speed fiber optic project. I think it's going to be very useful for us to separate these things. We're bundling too many things together in a big package, and it gets very confusing. This is an awful lot of material to go through and fully grasp from Thursday. So I think this is a better strategy, because it separates out the projects, and it allows the high-speed project, high-speed fiber project, to be achieved with certainty, and the others to be discussed later. So here's the outline of the strategies. $3 million the cost. If we get a $1.5 million federal grant from the Commerce Department, that leaves a balance of $1.5 million. If we get a $0.5 million state grant, which has to create 100 new jobs, and it should do that, that leaves a balance of $1 million. All right, so now we secure a five-year full faith and credit bond to be paid for as follows and backstopped by the general fund. You take $750,000 from that $1 million. You get the $750,000 by taking $125,000 a year from the money that comes in, the sunsetted, into the general fund from the sunsetted urban renewal district for five years. That's $750,000. The balance is $250,000. That's paid for with telecom funds. Balance is now zero. Interest would be paid with eWeb Selt funds and property owner's connection fees. If the city received only a portion of the grant request, or no grants at all, that's a remote possibility, the amounts from the funding sources listed above would be increased proportionately. So this is the cleanest way to do this. We separate out the most important thing, which I think we all agree is the fiber optic project, and we achieve that with this path. And this, it should be modified. This is the outline of the path.
I'll put you in another round.
I need, I'm going to need at least.
Come on.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's wisdom in what George says. I think there's wisdom in having a redundancy of options for funding this. From my perspective, we need and want to do this part of the complete presentation here as quickly and as efficiently and as successfully as we can. And as a result, if we have multiple backup plans, as it were, I think that's good, and I want to say thank you to George for having done the work of putting all this together. It's impressive. I think it can operate as a backup plan to what I would think would be the wise course, which is that if there are places where we can substitute out urban renewal money over time as some other options for grants become likely, then we should. And I think that's a wise way to go, but I am comfortable with us moving forward today to begin the process so that we're at least working on getting the ball rolling. And if it turns out, before we get to the time we have to make a final decision in June about pulling the trigger on extending urban renewal, it gives us that three-month time for us to work through some of these other options and say, can we substitute out some of that money? When it comes to the other projects on here, I'm comfortable with the LCC Innovation Center idea. I'm comfortable with the farmer's market. The downtown park blocks portion is a very large price tag, and it leaves me with a little heartburn. I didn't think that I would see quite so much spending around the idea of rebuilding that area, and I'm not sure I'm comfortable with Beyond A. I guess I would, I would wonder a couple of things, too. We got a memo earlier this week about our expectation to see increased PERS expenditures in the next few years, so to maybe $3 million in '18 and beyond. Is that about right?
Yes, we have some preliminary rates from PERS, and when we kind of run that through our personnel, we would get about a $2 million increase in the general fund for '18, and then there'll be another increase in '20, and another increase in '22.
So multiple millions as the years go out?
Yes.
Do we have a clear path with general fund dollars about how we'll pay for that at this point?
We're working on an update to the general fund forecast, which we will bring to you when the City Manager presents his proposed budget. So we're working on it.
Well, we will have one, is what I'm hearing you say, but we don't at the moment. My point, I suppose, is that I think that options for building the ultra-high-speed fiber with general fund monies become more precarious the farther out in the future we go because of our obligations that we, at this moment in time, don't know how we're going to fund. So I would urge us to begin the process. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, again, just to reiterate, back in 2010, the council made it very clear that the downtown urban renewal district should expire, and I intend to stick by my word when I said that. And others who weren't on the council aren't bound by that, but those that were here get to make their own choice about whether or not they want to stick by that decision at the time. I'm a little surprised by the alternative funding package. There was 20-something options that we had, and you guys came up with general obligation bonds? I've seen you be incredibly creative in different ways over the years, and this is singularly uncreative. There's a whole bunch of different ideas in here that had merit to help fund this as an alternative, and just putting out a GO bond is kind of the least common denominator one, the one that's least palatable to me. And so I'm wondering... the least common denominator one, the one that's least palatable to me. And so I'm wondering what happened to a package? What happened to responding to George's idea, which is a package? And I can't believe that every one of these 20 or so different options all were, we can't use them. I know there's some that we can.
I'd like to, first of all, with George's option, there are some ideas in there. What you asked us to do is be prepared to critique and discuss it, which we are. And so I don't think you're intending to have anything ahead of time. With respect to the option, the motion was for us to make a recommendation we thought would be the best funding option. And I think we could go through all of these different ones and talk about why we think there's pros and cons to those, and why we chose the one we did as opposed to various levels. So for example, when we talk about even telecom funds, you might remember that the high-speed fiber project, part of it's in the district, part of it's outside the district. So we assume that it might be possible, we may need telecom funds for that part that's outside the district, and there's only so much of that money that goes around. And so then you have to decide how you're going to fund what's inside the district, as an example. So I think we can go through all the different funding options. From our perspective, the most reasonable is to actually spend a GO bond on capital projects. That's what they're set up for, and there isn't enough dollars in these other funds to actually do all of that without offsetting against some other services that we currently pay for with those funds. So we can go through all of those as well if we'd like to.
Yeah, I guess I was expecting a little bit more creativity, a GO bond being a big part of it. But there are other things in here, grant and telecom and park SDCs and potential levies and other kinds of funding options that could have created a package with the backbone of it being a GO bond. So I would like to see us go through that and come up with something a little bit more than just a generic GO bond, because if any of these worked, it reduces that GO bond and therefore reduces the amount that we have to ask for. And so that's a worthy task for us to go through. And I was, though, even though this is kind of the worst case for me, the GO bond, I was kind of intrigued by how affordable it was. Package A was $7 per year for a typical home in Eugene. B was $13, and C was $30 a year. So if you reduce that by any of these other programs, by getting grants or anything like that, it makes it even more affordable. As far as all of the Christmas tree approach to putting all of these packages of all these different projects onto the funding tree, I'm not sure I buy them in their totality. I'd like to have a conversation about each one and decide whether or not they move forward. We don't need to do that right now, but each one of them should stand on their own merits. And then if we want to package them, we can, and move forward with them. But I think it muddies the waters substantially if we just treat this as carte blanche on all of these projects all at once.
George.
Thank you, Mayor.
Not you, George.
Me. First round.
First round, George.
Thank you. First of all, we kind of had the discussion already about what we decided as a council in 2010, and everybody has their opinion as to whether or not we're allowed to change our minds based on changing circumstances. And I think based on the economic times and the growth that we're seeing, I think it's probably the best idea for us to change our mind. And I personally am tired of hearing about, we're going to lose the trust of the citizens if we change our mind. You know, like I said at one of our meetings before, that pony left the barn a long time ago. On the next to the last slide that you put up for the comparisons of costs, there's a real, two interesting things on there that I'd like to point out. By using the downtown urban renewal funds, the public cost under the urban renewal funds stays the same, plain and simple. There's no increase to the public. Also, the local school impact stays the same. Under the alternative to urban renewal, people will see an additional tax put on, plus the school districts will lose approximately $340,000 a year if the urban renewal district ceases. So those are two real interesting facts. The most important one is the public cost stays the same if we're using urban renewal district. So I think, you know, that would probably be the best way to go at this point. You know, I appreciate all the hard work George has done on his recommendations, but there are just too many what-ifs involved in it. You know, he's counting on the Commerce Department for grant, he's counting on the state for grant, and I know for a fact that grants aren't as easy to come by as they used to be, and they're not as, for not as much money as they used to be, and there's a lot more restrictions on them. So I would hate to, you know, put all of our eggs in one basket on getting money from the state in front of money on grants, and then find out that we're not going to, you know, not going to have it. Plus, didn't the federal government pass something about telecommunications taxes this past legislative session? Or is that the local governing agencies no longer assess fees?
There has been legislation related to telecom, I think, in every session of Congress, and the FCC has done rulemaking. As far as I know, nothing has been passed that affects our telecommunications tax.
Would it be too much to research that and get back with us? Because I don't exactly remember kind of walking through one room and then into another when there was a newscast on about that, and I was just kind of concerned. I didn't get it, and I never did get a chance to go back to look it back up.
Sure, we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this from all the people. I just can't help but notice that the undercurrent in this entire conversation is around, is urban renewal an inherently evil system? That is so bad, we must get rid of it, and that we will cobble together, other funding schemes, we'll look for other options, we'll look for anything we can to try to do some portion of this, but we'll raise taxes, we'll hurt the school district, we'll do whatever we need to do to kill this evil system. And I don't have the impression that urban renewal is the evil that some folks may see it as being. Of course, any system can be abused, and if you looked at the entire 50-year history of urban renewal, there may be some projects in there that may not have been a perfect use or perfect match. It may not have been illegal, but they may have been maybe not the best choice. But nevertheless, is urban renewal inherently evil funding system? We spent our Budget Committee meetings looking for revenue sources. I mean, we had an entire committee that was set up looking for revenue sources. This is a revenue source, and it's a relatively easy revenue source. It's a source that's already been here for 50 years. It's a source that does not increase taxes for the people in the community. It doesn't take away $340,000 from the school district in order to be accomplished, and you can do all these projects in a very straightforward way. And so from that standpoint, it's like, why are we trying so hard to come up with a complicated funding system when a simple one is right in front of us? The only explanation would be, well, the simple one is also the evil one, and we must kill it. And I keep coming back to, what is inherently evil in the urban renewal fund, in the urban renewal agency? And I don't have a clear answer to that question, and I would love to hear, what is the inherent evil in it? And I'm sure people have it. I don't think people are being disingenuous. But for me, I don't see that evil. And so for me, it looks like a reasonable source to accomplish the projects we'd like to do in a relatively straightforward, doesn't burden the taxpayers or the school district kind of way. Now, there doesn't have to be just A, B, or C. There could be an A+, there can be a B-, we can go with whatever comfort level on any of these projects we want to, or even remove one if we want to. I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing to do. But the point I want to make is, as a primary funding source, I think urban renewal is definitely something that we should continue to look at because I think it can be a reasonable way to fund at least some of these projects without having to do back bends and contort ourselves in order to come up with some other way to do it. That creates additional burden.
So I just want to inquire whether Claire or Greg want to be in round one before we move to round two?
Wait for the second round.
Okay, so we'll go Betty, and then George Brown, and then Mike.
Thank you. Urban renewal does not create money. It diverts money from other sources. So it's not as if we get it for free. I think some people talk as if it's just free money. And it is, it is easy to use. That's true. It's easy to use it because you don't have to have votes or anything. If we, as for the projects we're talking about, I think we should discuss each of them separately. I said that before, and Alan said that, too, but, and discuss the merits and the best way to pay for them. And we certainly don't need to do everything at once, and maybe some of the things don't need to be done. Such things as putting seats downtown. We used to have them, we took them away. That's fairly simple. If we start this now, it's going to take a great deal of time and money on the part of citizens who will be, who will be starting an effort to defeat it. And I think we can be sure of that. And it will take effort on the parts of lots of people to put it on the ballot unless we decide to put it on the ballot, and it will end up being defeated. I think we can be fairly sure of that. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to respond to a couple of things I heard from Council Polling and Council Prior. There actually is a public cost by having the downtown urban renewal district keep going. It's in the form of forgone revenue to the general fund, much like MPT is. That's a million bucks a year and growing that is denied the general fund that can be used for any project anywhere in town. So there is a public cost in that respect. And Council Polling mentioned the uncertainty of grants, and that's true. And that's why I said in here, if we don't get the grants, the contribution from the other categories will be increased proportionally. For instance, you know, the $125,000 from the urban renewal money that would go to the general fund, that could be easily increased to $500,000 a year because it's going to be a million bucks. So, you know, $500,000 a year for five years is $2.5 million. We could increase it more if we wanted to. I'd like to hear some Budget Committee input on that, but because, you know, there's so many other priority needs that the city has. However, this would be, this is one way that the end of the urban renewal district would pay for the fiber optic project. And if we look at these things, you know, piece by piece, rather than throwing everything into, you know, Bernie's bargain bag at the Notion store, you know, it's like, let's separate them out and attack each one one by one, okay? Because we're going to end up with this big mishmash, and it's going to be very confusing for people. And if we keep it simple, that's the best way to go. And then we figure out how we're going to fund the other projects and see through the public engagement process, what, how people think. I bet there's a lot of people that think, well, gee, we don't, why should we spend a lot of money fixing up the new city hall that's already going to have a plaza? I don't think that's that important to most people that live in town. Farmer's Market's another thing, but there's so many uncertainties involved with the county, ownership of the butterfly lot. You know, they haven't even received, they're seeking a $1.5 million grant to, just from the state, and I don't think they've received it yet, just to study what the courthouse needs are. Well, that's going to take a year and a half or two years. Then they need to receive the money from the state to actually build the courthouse. How many years will that take? This is a ways down the road. We don't have to rush to any decision about the butterfly lot or Farmer's Market. The LCC building, you know, is a perfectly fine building. I've been in it many times. The basement is grim. It's faded. It needs a serious makeover. LCC can sell that building to a developer. There's no need for the city or the urban renewal agency to get involved with that project. They're perfectly capable of handling that property transaction.
Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody here want to go back to the downtown Eugene five years ago, 10 years ago? I'd be willing to bet nobody does. I'd be willing to bet that there's probably not a lot of people in our community that would say we haven't gone leaps and bounds into the future on what our downtown should be like for everybody to enjoy it. Been a lot of work done. I'd like the manager and staff, if they can, to just remind us of some of the creative financing and creative things we've done in the process of the last few years to see downtown get to the place where it is today, from guaranteeing that we'd rent an entire floor to, you know, could you remind me of some of the tools we used along the way, please?
Yeah, I think the last time we did a presentation, I think there was about 20 different tools, actually. Urban renewal is one of them. Our loan program is obviously one of them. We've assembled land, we've purchased land, we've sold land. We used some federal stimulus tools at one point. We've used parking, we've used MPT, we've used grants, lots of things. And all in sum, I think the number, you know, downtown in the last five-plus years is approaching maybe $20 million in different ways that we participate in, and probably $300-plus million in projects. So we have invested, yes.
Thank you. The history of our community is on a timeline of what's the next big thing that we need to be working on. We did this one well, and the innovation sector that is growing in our downtown isn't at critical mass yet, but you can see it from here. And this is the time when it's appropriate, I think, for us to be looking at, how do we get creative? How do we use the tools at our disposal in order to help, have the city help leverage that next phase of the growth of our community? We're at the right place for that. I think the motion that's in front of us on the table today gives us the opportunity to continue to evaluate that between here and June before making a final decision and to use all the tools at our disposal to do it. And we can choose the right ones as we go. There's no final decisions today. But I know of a couple of people who work in the tech sector in downtown Eugene. One of them was working in a really good job, $55,000, and kind of almost an entry-level tech job, who got, who asked for a little bit more money from his employer and wasn't able to do that, and within two weeks' time was offered another job for $95,000, staying right here in our community, working for a company back east. But because of the capacity for, of our current system, he was able to leverage that to find better employment while staying here. That's one of all manner of stories that is being replicated today in this growing tech sector in our downtown, whether the companies are here or not. The people who work here are able to do more with their lives, the more the city is creating an infrastructure to help them leverage that. And I think it's time for us to move into this next phase. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got George Polling, and then I've got Claire.
Thank you.
And you're in this first.
When we talk about the farmer's market and park blocks, this is not a new issue. We've been discussing both of these for years and years. Granted, the fiber optic is a new discussion, relatively new discussion, but it's something that's happening fast. And, you know, we don't need to be left behind on this one. This is a real critical project. Finally, the LCC project. It's new, but, you know, part of the process that we go through if this motion passes is to kind of flesh that out and see where we are on it. Do we add it into it? Do we not? I mean, you know, it's early on discussions on that. So, you know, either way, whatever happens to that building is going to add to the renovation that's been going on in the downtown area. And then, you know, just, and I don't want to keep going back and forth on this, but, you know, George mentioned about keeping it simple. How much simpler can you get than to extend the urban renewal district? You add no new taxes, and you build all projects. That's pretty simple.
Claire?
Thank you. So I am finding myself definitely in, on the one hand, and on the other hand, position here. I do appreciate Councilor Brown putting together this funding proposal, but I have some concerns about some of the alternative packages. I have a concern about imposing a new tax on the entire city for projects focused in downtown, even a relatively small one, given that there may be other things we go out, want to go out to the voters for, to ask them to fund throughout the city. I'm concerned about the estimated I'm concerned about the estimated $340,000 negative impact on the 4J school district budget, given the way the state funding formula works. So I would want to give their board or superintendent, whoever is appropriate, an opportunity to give us some feedback about this pending decision that would have such a significant impact on their bottom line. And I don't want to put councilors who were on council in 2010 in a position of breaking a promise, but if we think these projects are important and have our support, I think we owe it to the public to do due diligence, that we are using the best prudent tools available that represent the most efficient use of public dollars. And I'm not convinced that GO bonds represent that. I would be inclined to move the process of exploring the urban renewal funding process forward. We will see a public reaction, a public response to that, even by having this discussion. I think the council in 2010 made a good faith promise, but it was based on a political calculation to avoid sending the proposal out to a vote of the people. If we decided to use this source of funding now, we should go out to the voters with it. And I would assert that the council should have done that in 2010, instead of attempting to kill urban renewal as a tool for future councils. And I would only support moving the urban renewal process forward if we agree to send it out to the voters. I also agree with some of the comments about looking more closely at the specific projects. For me, I think the fiber optic project is high on the list, at least beginning some process for looking at improvements to the park blocks and then maintaining our commitment to the Farmers Market. For me, those are my three top priorities in terms of what we're looking at. I'm definitely willing to look at the LCC building, and I'm right now kind of neutral on whether or not if we did urban renewal, you know, it might make sense to expand it to cover in the new City Hall, but I haven't quite landed on a decision there. So those are my thoughts at this point.
So George is in the third round, but before we go there, I just wanted to say that the things that I've heard for discussion that would be helpful to staff, one is, do you want to separate the projects instead of talking about them as a, as a whole package? That's just for you to consider. Secondly, do you want to use urban renewal or other sources? If you want to come to land on one of those or some other combination, it's helpful for them to know that as soon as you're ready to do that. And thirdly, I feel like I want to say, and I've said it every time, but I just want to be clear, because I don't want it to come back to us in a, in a wrong way, is that we have been clear that we will pursue fiber in any case. It might take longer, it might be more difficult, but we have said we will, we will pursue fiber in any case. So I just want to make that clear, too. So if you all find some direction, I'm going to, George is going to have, is in the next round, around these questions that have come forward today, so we can figure out how we move forward. We can either move forward today or be better prepared for the next meeting. So just, okay, George.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, the Funding Strategy III is, is the cleanest route to achieve the main thing that we wanted to do, which since the beginning was the fiber optic project. We were all pretty clear that that would be a really beneficial project to do. Then these other things got added on. I suspect with the intention of, you know, providing a reason to violate our promise to, to the voters and electorate in 2010 and extend, amend the Urban Renewal District to, you know, make it more appealing, well, let's throw this in. Hey, how about this? Let's put that in, too. I really think it's a mistake to, to take this complicated path. And we can, and, and Counselor Clark, you know, eloquently spoke of the need for this, and I agree with you, and, but, but you, you're mixing too many things. We can achieve that with, with Funding Strategy III. The uncertainties of the other ones are so, I mean, it's going to be, and yes, Counselor Polling, you're correct. We have been talking about the Park Blocks and the Farmers Markets for years, but you know what? We're going to be talking about them a few more years, because there's no money. The county hasn't received the money to do the initial study, and that's going to take two years. And then they haven't received the money from the state. So that, there's so many uncertainties with that part, we can safely separate that from the other, you know, from the fiber optic project and do the thing that we can do. Let's do, let's achieve one thing, one simple thing. Let's do that. And then we can move on to the other ones as, as the time right. It's too early for us to, to make any kind of hard and fast decisions about the Butterfly Lot and the Farmers Market and the City Hall Plaza. I think that should be scratched from the list anyway, wherever, there are architects that are already designing a plaza, so. And the LCC, really, that's, I don't think we need to be involved with that. That's a, that's a pretty decent building upstairs, and I think that they can sell it to a willing buyer, developers that could go in there and really spiff it up and make it a nice, you know, a nice resource downtown. I don't, I don't think the Urban Renewal Agency or the city needs to be too involved with that, other than the, you know, revolving loan fund. So it's just, I, I just shake my head when we, when we take something that's relatively straightforward, fairly simple to achieve, and we complicate it, and we make it more difficult to achieve. There's no reason to do that. It's, 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 it just makes more sense to do, to do the most important thing, which at this point is the fiber optic project. And we can achieve that. We can achieve that. You know, you apply for the grants, and we know in a year, probably, and the Urban Renewal District sunsets at the end of this year, and the money is available next year.
Alan, you're next, and then Mike.
Yeah, I, I think you put forward a false choice, Mike. It's not use urban renewal or we go back to a crappy downtown that we had 10 years ago. I think most of these projects, especially the high-speed fiber project, make a great deal of sense and have a majority of council support. Question is, how do you pay for it? And, and could we come up with $3 million for the high-speed fiber project without urban renewal? Absolutely. We could do that. So there's little, to no disagreement about the merits of that project and some of the other projects. It's really about the funding mechanism. So it's not a binary choice before us. It's not, do we do it through urban renewal, or nothing happens and, and Armageddon happens? So that's not, that's not the case. It's not true. Regardless of the funding mechanism, I think we should be thinking that, we should be referring this to the voters, is one. I think we should take up each of the projects separately and discuss their merits. And then third, I think we need creative packages around each of the projects on their own. They're all kind of unique in some way or another that create opportunities for funding mechanisms that, and, you know, I applaud the work that we've done and the staff, Denny, you've done, and other folks have done over the years, all the amazing creative, creative ways of pulling together this piece of money and that piece of money, and this grant and that grant, and using this tax incentive and this federal incentives. I mean, that's how the Broadway Commerce Plaza happened, that's how we put together the LCC package. I mean, every one of these deals actually has multiple pieces to it, where we cobbled together a bunch of stuff. None of them are straightforward, simple things, not one. And so that's all, I, I think we should be thinking that way about these projects as well, so that we could, that we could see what the true options are, other than just the GO bond.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry my friend didn't understand my original point, which was, what he got to at the end there, that we've had to work hard and we've had to cobble together many different ways, and we'd have, have had to leverage all the tools at our disposal to get to the place we are today. And it wasn't a choice, shall we go backward in time? I was saying, no one would like to do that. We're all proud of the work that's been done so far and the place we've come to. And the more important point is, it's time for us to look at how do we keep moving forward? And the way we keep moving forward is the same way we've gotten here, by using all the tools at our disposal, by not cutting any of them off. The only questions we face today are, how much do we want to leverage to do which of these projects? And then, what's the timeframe for having to do that? And I would suggest, I did before, and frankly, if you go back, my motion in December was to use urban renewal for the $3 million, so we could just do the fiber. That was my original motion. I think that if we put this on the ballot today, the two big questions are, one, how many of these projects and what level for each? And number two, do we send it out for a vote or not? And I think that we should pass the motion that's been suggested today and spend the next three months answering those two questions. What level on each of these pieces? Because each one's going to require its own work session, I think, in order to look at the pieces and, and what's involved in, in each, and to look at the other funding mechanisms that we can bring to bear in order to lessen what we might ask of a potential urban growth, I mean, excuse me, Urban Renewal District leverage. And then when we get to the end of the process, we'll know, we're only going to need this specific dollar amount of the Urban Renewal District, and then we can answer the question, shall we put that to a vote or not? So we're just moving forward with the motion that's suggested.
Before I call on Chris and Claire, I guess my, my comment is, I don't see any evil intention here on the part of anybody. Everything, we've been talking about all of these things, and I don't see any evil intention. I see putting before you the option of how many things do you want to take action on at this time, and do you want to use these as a sources to do that? And I just caution you that when you make comments about that question, the evilness of stuff, you're sort of playing into the trust issue with the community in a big, loud way. Just want to make that point. Okay. Chris, and then Claire.
I apologize if I've misunderstood. That was not my intention. For the sake of clarity, which is what was asked for, what, what would I look for? And, and I think I agree that we've been talking about high-speed fiber as being the most critical and the most immediate of the things we want to do. And so I definitely think we need to move full speed ahead with the fiber, and if that can be included in urban renewal, that would be one thing. But I think having a, a Plan B for how that could still be funded, I think is also important, because that is so important, we want to figure out the way to finance it. With that said, that also implies that we should look at each one of these options individually so we can put together the comfort level on each one of them. But at the same time, it's also, with the importance of high-speed fiber, I don't want to sound like we're saying, well, these other ones, yeah, we've talked about them for years, and yeah, they're kind of important, but we'll, we'll get to them when we can. The Park Blocks is important to me, and I've been saying that for a while now, is, the Park Blocks have been ignored far too long. And they, and we really need to start committing to doing something with the Park Blocks. And this is a good way to do it. And if we kind of say, oh, we'll figure that out later, later keeps getting further and further out. And the LCC building is an incredible opportunity. And I think if we say, we don't need to worry about it, we'll let LCC worry about it, was a similar thing we talked about all about downtown before. Downtown will figure itself out, we just don't have to worry about it. We need to be involved, and I think our involvement at the LCC building is one of the ways that it will be successfully developed. And so I think we should keep that conversation on the table. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm willing to look at the fiber as a separate issue and find funding options for the fiber because it's that important, whether it's included in urban renewal or not. And I think if we take it before the voters, we perhaps could, should consider something to go before the voters that doesn't include the high-speed fiber, so we can have more certainty and clarity around the high-speed fiber. And I, and then put together a package that really is worthwhile and represents the best package we can. So, yeah, I think there's more conversation we should have. So whatever we need to do to not eliminate this as an option. So if we need to vote on the motion that's being proposed in order to keep that option in our tool belt, I think we need to continue on. But, yeah, I'm open to continuing, to talk about what other funding options might be, especially for high-speed fiber. But if we need to keep this option on the table and the motion does that, then I'm, I'm willing to continue that conversation.
Claire?
Thank you. So I have some questions. So going back to the 4J budget impact, does that impact happen if we sunset the district as is going to happen if we don't do anything about it? And has any, are, do you, does anyone know if they are aware of that potentiality?
Yes, I've talked with their finance folks, you know, in preparation for these council meetings. And as part of the process, if the plan amendment moves forward, part of the public process that's required under state statute is that we do notify them and consult and confer with them as part of the process, so.
So in theory, at this point, and in months prior to this conversation, they were expecting this sunset to happen? That might be hard for you to answer, but that wasn't necessarily a question. And then on Counselor Brown's proposal, one of his line items is 750,000 using 125,000 a year for five years. How does that work? Is that, I mean, do you read that in terms of Counselor Brown's proposal, that he would be anticipating that the Budget Committee would approve that every year for five years? Is that how you read it?
The way I read it is that we would issue bonds that would be repaid from those dollars. And I think it would actually have to be 150,000 a year instead of 125,000 to get to 750, but yes.
So at this point, as I kind of said at the beginning of my last comments, I would actually be willing to support looking at two different ways forward. So supporting the recommendation in the packet of moving forward on the urban renewal and continuing to scrutinize the individual, the individual projects and potential ways to fund those. I didn't quite follow the last comments of Counselor Pryor about taking the fiber optics out of the urban renewal district vote. I wouldn't necessarily support that. I think it's an important project for, to include in the urban renewal if, if we're going to look at that. And as I kind of implicated in my prior comments, I would also might support limiting the Park Block scope to starting the public input process so that we can see what people want us to do in, in that location, and then we can look at what the funding options are kind of based on how large or small the aspirations for that, for the Park Blocks are in terms of what the public is interested in. I definitely would want to hear more about the LCC building project before putting that into a package, and I am fine with continuing this discussion on Wednesday before we make any motions.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and have Greg put the motion on the table and see what kind of response we get.
Well, and I just have one comment before I do that. From my perspective, urban renewal is, following the tool, tool belt analogy, is the hammer in the, in the toolbox. Now, you can drive a nail with pliers, but it's going to take a lot longer to do that. So I, I think that we should keep the, the tools that we have at our disposal available to us in this context. So with that, I'm going to move to forward to the city, including the Planning Commission as well as to the overlapping taxing districts, and request that the city manager schedule a public hearing on proposed amendments to the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan, consistent with the draft plan and report included in Attachments H and I.
Second, and I have a question.
Moved and seconded, and I have in the queue Alan and George. Alan?
So this doesn't mention any alternative funding mechanisms other than urban renewal, so does that mean if we pass this motion, for instance, all those other conversations are off the table? Or is it understood that we're still moving along in a dual track, and this is just to move us on that particular track a little further down the road?
It would not preclude the council from moving forward on an alternative track. If you want to make that explicit, then you, if the President and Vice President wanted to add the following language, this would make it explicit, to the end of the motion, "In addition, individual work sessions shall be scheduled after council break on each of the four types of projects."
If someone's willing to make that amendment, I'm willing to.
Friendly?
Well, I'll add it to the motion. What he said.
I'll accept that, but it doesn't say, it just says the four projects, not...
The four types of projects, we could add, including alternative funding strategies.
Right, okay. Right, that makes me feel better. Yeah, I'll second that.
George?
Well, I, I think we're moving a little too fast here, but are we going to have a work session on Wednesday if this motion passes? Or would that be too early for staff to present new information? Or would that be too early for staff to present new information?
We wouldn't be able to present new information. If you wanted to continue the conversation on anything that's already, you know, part of the conversation, we, of course, could do that. It'd be hard to prepare brand-new information to meet.
Yeah, I can appreciate that.
No meeting.
Well, I'll, I won't, yeah. I was going to make a motion to table this motion until the end of Wednesday's work session, but it seems like everyone's kind of made up their mind and we won't have new information, so the amendments were acceptable, and so I won't, I won't make my motion.
Mike?
Pass.
All right, then. I think we're ready for a vote on the motion. You want to read what the motion is and finally?
Sure.
With all those bells and whistles?
From the beginning, "I move to forward to the city, including the Planning Commission, as well as the overlapping taxing districts, and request that the city manager schedule a public hearing on proposed amendments to the downtown urban renewal plan, consistent with the draft plan and report included in attachments H and I. In addition, individual work sessions shall be scheduled after council break on each of the four types of projects, including alternative funding strategies."
So, given that that's the motion, I just want to be sure that, and I think it is, that you were being asked to look at sort of a fresh look at the other options, to see if there's other ways.
Yeah, for sure. You know, the previous direction was to really take a look at it in total, and what, it's very clear is that a majority of the council, assuming this passes, would like to take a look at each project individually, not just as an urban renewal project, but also other funding alternatives that might apply to that as well. So we take that as the direction.
Thank you, city manager. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two, it passes. Thank you, and we will now convene again at 7:30.
Do you want to do the consent calendar?
I can do a couple things.
I turn the urban renewal on.
No, I don't know what it means about Wednesday.
It means you don't need to do Wednesday, but before...
We're going to do the consent calendar, but I have to get out of there. Okay?
But you also have one item as the urban renewal agency. Item four is the appointment to the expenditure review panel for the urban renewal plan. So if you're ready to do that...
Anybody have any objection to that?
No.
Okay.
So, let me move. "I move to appoint Sherry Shafer to the expenditure review panel for the downtown urban renewal plan."
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you for that, Glenn. And so now we're going to go out of the urban renewal district, we're going to go into this media council meeting, and we're going to put the consent calendar on the table.
"I move to approve the items on the consent calendar."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any, any concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. And so now we are through with the business till 7:30. Thank you.